So, we presume that we know their name, but I don't. So, would you introduce yourself to the audience and to us, and then go ahead?
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carl Bursa. I am a planner with the office, and I am in charge of the application ZV 3222, 4202 11th Street.
Thank you.
The applicant's property is located right here, outlined in red. ZV 3222 is requesting a variance, the side yard setbacks, to allow the placement of a pool in the -- to allow placement of the pool in the side yard setbacks. This is the proposed site plan, showing the house, which is currently under construction, with the pool addition right here, including the paver area right here. This is a closer view of the proposed pool deck and the addition with the rear yard setback encroachment overlaid. The green box that you see here on your screen, that is their rear yard setback. Rear yard setbacks in the R6 zone or in the R9 zone, both, this property is actually split zoned, but both of them have a seven-foot required side yard setback. You can see the applicant's pool right here, encroaching it to the side yard setback, mostly on the -- from here all the way to the north edge, right here. The way that the -- the way that Glen County treats pools, the actual structure of the pool, where the water's edge is, has to be completely contained within the property line. The applicant is requesting this variance so that the applicant can place their pool right here. This is a view from the northeastern property line. I'm at -- I was actually standing all the way in the far corner. If you follow the line, the arrow right here, this would be where the pool would be. You can't see it because of the lighting, but there is a chain link fence that has a black fabric drape over it, right here. This is a view looking northeast at the proposed addition. It would be right in this area, right in here. And again, the house is right there where that ladder's leaning, right there. This is again from the northeast, a view of the northeast corner of the property. Again, you can see there's this stone wall, this concrete wall right here. And again, the pool would actually be, if the pool were in place, I would be standing in the middle of it. This is a view of the southern boundary of the property, looking toward the ocean. The building setback line for the front yard, and again, this is actually their front yard because the house has an 11th Street address, so their 20-foot front yard setback is right here, and you would not be able to see the pool from here because they've -- they have the -- the pool will be meeting the front yard setbacks. ZV 3222 again is to request the required side yard setbacks be varied, and again, and I spoke, my misspoke, R9 is R12 zoning. And R12 and R6 both have a seven-foot side yard setback. They're requesting variance to allow the pool and deck addition within this rear yard setback. The paver deck does not require the -- does not require setback because the pavers are at grade, but the applicant went through the -- went to the county and requested an encroachment agreement with them to allow them to place pavers, the pavers over their existing property line. The building, the actual pool itself, the lip of the pool would be exactly one foot from the property line in some places. This would constitute a variance request of 86% in some areas. This is just a brief background on the encroachment, on the encroachment agreement. Again, the applicant received this encroachment agreement on April the 21st, 2016. And again, this is only for the paver deck. This is not, this has nothing to do with the pool itself. The encroachment agreement constitutes neither approval or disapproval of the variance request, and the encroachment agreement does not require or guarantee approval of this variance request. Just so you folks are aware, actions on similar cases, last year, March 12, 2015, a variance application was presented before you for 4310 14th Street requesting a pool and the required side yard setbacks, and it was denied unanimously at hearing. These are the criteria for variances. Again, you've, if you've read my staff report, I go over everything that you have to find in order for there to be, in order for you to grant a variance. It's pretty self-explanatory. And the, this is additional criteria here. These are the possible motions with regard to this variance. Based on this, you can either move to approve the variance for, excuse me, you can approve to move, to move to approve variance, ZV 3222, requesting this, for this variance for Section 10701.5. You can move to deny it based on failure to meet the criteria under Section 1005.3 of the Glen County zoning ordinance, or you can move to defer the variance application. And, Mr. Rafalski.
Sorry.
And I will be happy to entertain any questions, if I may.
Anybody here?
Carl, I have one. Did the county abandon Dixon?
No, sir. We've not. No, sir. And that's the whole, the whole premise behind the encroachment agreement that was, that was agreed to between the applicant and the county. The county asserts ownership of Dixon to this day.
The commission, they had meaning two weeks ago and did not abandon?
No, sir.
Okay. But they approved the name?
They approved, yes, sir. They approved the, they approved the encroachment agreement.
Would you go back to the slide that had the green box? Okay, now would you go back to the one that had the red box? The one that extends the property?
Yes, sir.
No, I want to...
Oh, okay. You're asking for the very, for the first slide?
Right.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. Just so I'm, I'm clear.
Of course.
Which sometimes I have a great deal of trouble with this, so go slow. The red line is their property line?
The red line is the way that the property appraisers have their property set up, the way that the property appraisers and the tax maps have their property set up right here. That's the way that it reflects. Their property line is this line right here.
Okay.
And again, this, this stems from, if you read the history of the case, back in 1999, a request for a pool was put in, and what wound up happening apparently was that assertion to ownership of this was claimed, and for whatever reason, it was approved. And again, this is, this has been treated this way for, up until the last application for the pool permit.
Okay. Do the property owners pay tax all the way to the water?
I do not know, sir. I'll have to have the applicant answer that.
Anybody, anybody here have any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I saw a wall up there.
Yes, sir.
Wall?
Yes, sir.
Is as far as the pool, is that wall going to come down or is it going to stay up?
That wall on the, on the north side is going to remain, to my understanding. I haven't seen any, anything to remove it, but again, I'll defer to the applicant if they have plans for it. That is not a part of this request right now, but again, if you, if you take a look, this is the property line right here, and that's where that wall is, right there. And so, the pool would be, the pool would actually meet the setbacks on the, what would be the rear yard right there. So, the actual lip of the pool here, I'll get you a better view. You can see the pool itself would actually meet the rear yard setback, yeah, the rear yard setback right here. This is the side yard, and again, this is their existing property line, right there.
How far is that property line from San Beach, et cetera?
This is the dune area right here.
Dunes, okay.
Yeah. And again, the property line right here, if you see this, right there, that's where that big bunch of greenery and that hedge row and the, and that fence, that, that chain link fence that they had the fabric over is.
And are there, I saw a couple of big trees there. Are they coming down to build a pool?
Given where, given where the location of the deck is, I can only assume that they would be taken down, but again, I'll defer to the applicant if they have other alternatives. Yes, sir.
Carl, are you saying that inside line that comes off of the green out towards the beach?
Yes, sir.
And then goes down into the 40-foot mark, that's that fence, that brick fence in the back?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this right here, that is the edge of their property line. And that's where that would be.
Now, there was a pool back there already, right?
Yes, sir. It extended all the way out into this section, right in here.
It extended further than what?
It did, yes, sir. It actually, it actually went beyond their property line and encompassed this area right in here.
But the applicant, that was, that was there prior to?
That was there, yes, sir. That was a non-conforming pool built, again, the initial construction was in 99. There was some sort of a reconstruction, a refab in 2003, I believe.
Anybody else have any other? So, this pool, this pool will really be within the area where the old pool was, correct?
This pool will actually be inside of the area where the old pool was.
So, they're actually coming in, not going out further?
Yes, sir. And that was part of the, part of the encroachment agreement, part of the, their discussions with their neighbors. The applicant did move, move the pool back from its original proposed construction.
So, so the brick fence on, on the back is going to stay?
No, I'm not entirely sure, Mr. Rafalski. I'll let the applicant answer that. Excuse me.
Anything further? I'd like to hear from the applicant presentation, please.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present this application to you today. I am Joey Strength, an attorney with Hunter McLean locally. I'm here on behalf of Tony and Elizabeth Townley, who joined me in the crowd right here, as well as Chip Evans and Jeff Homans, who are also the contractor and land planner for the Townleys as a part of this project, and have assisted me in the application. While we are utilizing the variance application process under the Glen County ordinances for your consideration of this matter, in our mind, and in my mind, this request is one that's not really seeking special treatment, as in a variance, rather it's one that's seeking fairness. Fairness in light of Glen County's historic treatment of this property over the past dozen or so years, and in fairness in light of the Townley's reliance on those actions and decisions by Glen County during that time. We strongly believe that upon review of all the facts in the case, the background of the property, the actions Glen County has taken in connection with the property, the Townley's reliance on that, those actions, the Townley's attempts to minimize the impact of the pool, pull it back within the property lines, and to minimize the request of Glen County, that you will find that they are entitled to relief in this matter at the conclusion of our presentation. I know in your ordinances, it indicates that an applicant will have 15 minutes to make a presentation. I would appreciate some accommodation if my presentation goes beyond that amount. I also make the request that I would be the sole speaker, except for a moment when Mr. Townley will join me in the presentation, so that you can hear a full background of our understanding of the case and why we're making this particular application.
Excuse me?
The decision...
Yes, sir.
How much extra time do you think you're going to need?
I think that I'll get close to the 15 minutes, but I wanted to, but I don't think it would be any more than 30 minutes.
Okay.
The decision before you today, in our mind, is whether or not you decide that Glen County should treat the Townleys in the same or similar manner than the prior owners of this property have, have been treated. Whether you will in fact allow them to have the requested pool that has less of an impact than the pool that has been on the property for almost a dozen years, or had been. I also make the case that this appeal really raises constitutional issues in connection with the Townleys. Their claims to the property in question, due process rights, equal protection as it applies to them versus prior owners, and then their free ability to use and benefit from property that they own. Just as background, this is a photograph, it's available on Google Maps, showing generally the property condition when it was acquired by the Townleys. You'll notice there's a substantial pool on the ocean side of the house, and, and that even though on the map, it appears that there's a great deal of upland, that a lot of that area here is beach. But again, this is the house, this is the pool that was in place when it was acquired. The Townleys acquired the property in 2013, and when they acquired it by deed, they received a warranty deed to this portion of the property, which is the historic lot, and then a quit claim deed as well to this adjacent property that reaches all the way to the high watermark of the Atlantic Ocean. This is similar, as you might note, to the tax map that has been adopted by Glen County. A couple of things to identify as we talk through this is that the original Lot 16 lot is this rectangle, and as you'll see there, the pool reaches over the lot, that's, this is the condition that was in, when they acquired the property. And then this area that's really to the east of that lot is what we'll call the accreted land. In our position, it is the accreted land. On this map, there's a red line here, and that's really a distinction of 80 feet that shows essentially the boundary of what would have been Dixon or Beach Drive. I will make a point later on that the Townleys have a claim to ownership of one half of Dixon or Beach Drive. And just for your reference, note that this line here, which is essentially the dune line, the foot of the dune, is essentially halfway between that. So, if you, as you look at these properties, if the Townleys own one half of Dixon Lane, then in fact, their property line would reach to that place, which is about 40 feet east of the existing lot line for Lot 16.
But that's an if, in fact?
I will...
That was your, you expressed that in an opinion, that if, in fact, right?
I would say that this is, there is, there are few areas on Glen, in Glen County that can be as complicated as East Beach, but I think from a technical standpoint, based upon the Bruce case, that the Townleys have the technical title to one half of Dixon Lane. A question is whether the right-of-way rights that also exist to Glen County, if there are any, or any other easement rights that adjoining owners might have, would require the setback from that property to remain at the original lot line, or from the one half of the Lot, of the Dixon line.
Okay. I'm having a little bit of difficulty with the ifs and, and ors. We're here to talk about what we know as the property line and the request for the variance. You're talking about a number of other issues that this forum can't judge, can't decide, can't acquiesce to. We're just looking for the, the variance request, and not who owns the, the right-of-way to a piece of property that's outside of the property line where they're asking for the request for the variance. I understand what you're doing.
Well, I would say that I'm not asking you to make a determination as to ownership of the property. What I think is important is that it's important to understand these factors, because it explains why Glen County in 2003 and 2004 gave the prior owners a permit to build a pool here. And if you understand those concepts, you can make a determination as to whether or not, in fact, the pool was based upon erroneous information, which is what the county is suggesting in the staff report, or whether the decision to allow the pool previously was a deliberate decision by Glen County based upon a reasonable interpretation of the facts. And so, I would appreciate the opportunity to share with you the, the principles by which that decision, we believe, was made.
Okay. That's a "we, we believe." That's your, your side of the "we believe," right? I'm only trying to, I mean, you can have your 10 minutes or whatever is left, but in the end, we're going to be talking about whether or not we can make a decision, or should make a decision, based upon what is listed in ZV 322.
That, that's right. And the county staff report says that we do not meet A, under that category, because the decision that was made previously was based upon erroneous information. And our position is that that decision made previously was not erroneous information, but was in fact based upon a deliberate decision by Glen County to approve the pool permit that allowed the construction of that pool in 2003, and that Glen County now is telling the new owner that they cannot put a pool there, and that, that that decision goes to the first factor in the test that you're going to determine today.
Okay. But you just succinctly told me what you're, what you're doing. I mean, you have said that you believe that based upon the fact that the other house, that the original house had the line, had the pool, that somewhere along the line, the county has said, okay, fine, and that now these people want to put a pool where the other pool was, correct?
That is not an accurate representation of what I'm trying to say. They are, and I would appreciate the opportunity to maybe go through my presentation and carry this out.
I would like you to be a little bit more succinct in, in what you're saying. I understand what you want, but a lot of this is stuff that you have the right to, and I'll let you go ahead, but we can't make a decision based upon some of the things that you say "if." So, I'm just trying to let everybody know that somewhere along the line, there's a bunch of ifs and things that people thought were there, and I'm sorry if they, they did, but I'm just trying to figure out what relevant facts we can, we can actually use to make a determination of whether to grant this variance. We're not attorneys, we don't, we're just variance people. So, I'm sorry if I'm throwing you off the hook, but please go ahead.
I will make one clarification, and I'll ask the county attorney to confirm that based upon the Bruce case, the county's position is that the Townleys own one half of the former Dixon Lane to the 40-foot mark within that drive.
Good morning. For you all, those, for those of y'all that don't know me, I'm Will Worley, Senior Assistant County Attorney. The county's position about Dixon Drive is that it is a platted public right-of-way that was dedicated by the original developer of the subdivision and was accepted by Glen County. So, I'm sorry. I have some good, like... Apologize. So, Glen County's position about Dixon Drive is that, again, that it was publicly dedicated on the original plat of the subdivision, that that dedication was accepted by Glen County, and therefore is a public right-of-way, that this portion of Dixon Drive has never been abandoned by Glen County. And so, Glen County's position is that there is a, the county holds a public right-of-way easement over Dixon Drive adjacent to this property. What Mr. Strength is alluding to, and which is an accurate summation of Georgia law, is whenever you, you put lots on a subdivision plat and you put streets next to that, unless the original developer retains, specifically retains, ownership of that, those rights-of-way or conveys them to someone else, then the assumption is that the adjoining landowner owns the fee simple up to the center line of that right-of-way. However, that fee simple ownership is encumbered by the public easement, and incidentally, a private access easement that's held by everyone that owns a lot in that subdivision. So, I think that's, if I'm not misunderstanding what Mr. Strength is saying, is from a technical sense, they do own to the center line of Dixon Drive. However, our position is it's encumbered by Glen County's public right-of-way easement.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a, can I ask something?
Yes, sir.
So, the county erroneously approved this permission that you got. So, what you're saying is because they erroneously approved it, then it's an issue that we should be reconsidering. And the county is now saying, oh, wait a minute, we screwed up, and maybe we need to look at this thing again, because we approved something that maybe we shouldn't have approved based on erroneous information. I'm not a lawyer, but if you approve something erroneously and it's proven that it was proved erroneously, then I think you guys need to sit down and work that out before we go ahead here and decide to approve or disapprove of that. So, I think your beef is basically with the county rather than with us, is my opinion. But continue.
No, thank you. And I would, the distinction we would make is that, that the 2003, 2004 decision was not made erroneously, that it was a deliberate decision by Glen County, and Glen County has now changed its mind based upon the same set of facts. It was not as if the applicant snuck something through the system, but it was a deliberate decision by Glen County. And Glen County cannot, they can't go back and forth over how you look at this particular property. Thank you for the opportunity to proceed. I would say that the evidence of the 2003 decisions are the letters that were in the file that was prepared, and I hope that you had a chance to see in our application. The first letter I would point to is the November 20th, 2003 letter, and this is approving the plans for the pool in 2003, indicating from a planning and zoning manager that the, the project, based on the information submitted, the project generally appears to be in conformance with Glen County zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations. Six days later, a separate letter was issued, and it appears that in the interim, from the issuance of the first letter to the issue of, so the second letter, both John Peterson, the Director of Glen County Community Development, and the Glen County Engineer Representatives reviewed the drawing, visited the site, and concurred that the proposed pool installation is shown is in compliance with all local laws. This is not a case of someone submitting something in the building permit office, it's sneaking through on an application and being approved. I don't know who else you would ask in Glen County at the time for approval, other than the people who have signed off on this letter. I also note that it was copied at the time to the county engineer, the planning and zoning director, and the building official. Several months later, in March 2004, the Shore Protection Committee issued a permit approving the prior pool. In that permit, I note that it was issued four months at a public hearing, and in that four months, you do not have an objection from anyone else from the county, from anyone copied on the letter, whether it was the county engineer, the planning director, the building official. And the permit at the time approved the pool, and it made reference to two very interesting points. And these are just inserts from those. The first says, "The project area has historically been an area of erosion, such that the surf zone was approximately, approximately the location of the back of the existing residence." And then in the special conditions, number three, it says, "If the shoreline should erode back to historic positions, such that the pool is in danger of being undermined or inundated, the pool must be removed at owner's expense." So, this was the pool plan that was approved. You may note that on the pool plan, it does show the pool stretching out across the original property line, which would have been a line essentially right here, and then other improvements also in that accreted land area. Just for a point of reference, that 40-foot point we talked about before that's halfway, that essentially the bottom of the dune line is right here.
You have five minutes.
I would submit for the record that in my presentation and communication with board members earlier, we were assured that we would have sufficient time to make our application and to make our presentation at the hearing.
So noted. Thank you.
I would say that the 2003 approval question is whether it's erroneous information or an informed decision. or an informed decision. In 2003, the county was as sensitive about the ownership of East Beach as they are now. The determination at that time was that the property was in fact property that could be used for a building permit, and the information has been shown through the different letters that were prepared. I would say that if you'll take a look quickly, this is the original East Beach map. It shows substantial landmass in this area, Block 22 is right here. This is a drawing, this is aerial, and if you look closely at the map in your materials, you'll see that the lots have eroded from the original East Beach map. This is our property here. The Bruce case addresses ownership of the upland areas at East Beach. I would say that the Bruce case really addressed the property between First and Ninth Streets. You might wonder why the property owners did not try to quiet title and register land to all of East Beach, it's because these lots had eroded and were not there. There are two principles in the Bruce case. First, the townies, the first principle is that if you have oceanfront land and the water basically takes over the lot line, that, and then by erosion, and then later accretes and adds property, then in fact you would have ownership belonging to the property owner who owns that lot. The second principle is just the ownership of the land that we talked about before. What is the evidence that this property accreted? Is the photo of the ship house from the 1930s, and then a photo of the ship house from the 1950s. Again, looking at the East Beach map from 1931, you'll see that there's been major change in the East Beach property. And again, there's the same photo showing that accreted land. Based upon that information, we believe that the county determined at the time in 2003, it's the only way to interpret the Shore Protection Committee that references the erosion and accretion of land, and it's the only way to make a reasonable judgment about what happened with those letters. The county determined that the townies or their predecessors owned the property all the way to the high watermark. I would say in 2015, they in fact show that on the tax map. The immediately adjoining parcel is taxed substantially lower, the depth of the towny parcel is here, and that's the value of their lot, that's the value of the adjoining lot. The townies are being taxed on this property. They issued, they went and received a building permit for the property in 2015 to put a new pool in, and where did the pool go? The property immediately across the line. This is substantially where the former pool was, here. I would say that based upon, I would ask for five minutes for Mr. Townley to speak to enable him to share with you their decision-making process when they received that building permit.
Hello, my name's Tony Townley, and a quick synopsis, I'm a co-founder of Zaxxus, and everything we do when we acquire real estate in a particular county and the different municipalities, we go and we get every permit possible before we move one ounce of dirt. So with that experience behind me, when we put this property under contract and we knew we wanted to do a scrape and rebuild, regarding this pool, I didn't want to take it out until I had a permit, because I wanted to know if I wasn't going to get a permit for a new pool, one option would be I could move the house back further to stay within any setbacks or whatever. So we applied, we got the permit for the new pool, we started our house, we're on our second or third floor, and then we get a stop and desist on the pool permit. By then, it's too late to move the house back. And anyway, to compromise with the county and the neighbors, we decided, well, we'll pull the pool within that property line, and anyway, that's kind of what we're asking for.
Yes, sir.
So you've pulled the pool inside the property line, other than your decking, and part of the pool may fall in the setback? Is that correct?
That's correct. And all we're asking is, is those hardscapes, which we refer to as decking or whatever, is no different than a sidewalk or driveway going to a public road.
But the actual pool itself will be right on the line?
Within a couple of inches.
Because if the one line is your fence, you're on the backside of the fence there.
I'm sorry. The answer earlier about the fence was misunderstood. The wall fence that was shown on that plat has been in place for more than 10 years, maybe more than it does it.
It's an adjoining fence, I mean, it's on the adjoining property line.
Yeah, and it runs, one corner turns, I was there this morning, one corner turns
That's right.
And goes the other way. Are you going to be inside that fence?
Yes, we are.
So you'll be inside the?
The existing fence, yes.
Okay.
And what we'd like to do, maybe, subject to the neighbor and the county, maybe take down that, this out there in that proposed right-of-way area. But that's a discussion we can have later.
So the line's not going through the pool, water, it's not going through the?
That's correct.
It's just going through some?
Now, the original pool permit that we had a permit from, from the county, did.
It goes through water.
And all we're saying is, look, to make everybody happy, we'll pull and keep the water of the pool inside that property line.
But you've actually turned, you've redone the pool, you were going the other way, and you've turned it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I will say, the townies had three decisions, I think, when the permit was, the cease and desist order was issued after they had started construction, reconstruction on the house. They could sue on the permit, they could seek an abandonment from the county trying to remove any interest in Dixon Lane, they could really pull back their plan and try and modify it in a way that asks for as little as possible, and that is what they've done here, and it's shown on that plan. To do that, they needed two things, this variance and the encroachment agreement with Glen County. They have reached an encroachment agreement with Glen County that was approved two weeks ago. They have met with the East Beach Property Owners Association, and the Property Owners Association is not objecting to this application. I would add one last thing on the site conditions prior to the pool, is it based upon the natural topography of the property? It's really, even though Glen County calls this a right-of-way, it is, it is not an accessible area. These are some photos, this is a photo from 12th Street looking south, this is the property here, you'll see the sign that says, "Dunes, please do not enter." This is a picture from the beach. This is a property from the East Beach, 11th Street access. This is the pathway towards the property from the beach. Again, it's a very area that by its topography itself tightens up and limits the, that makes this an exceptional extraordinary property, meeting Section A of the variance standards. For the variance standards, I would also say that setbacks are there really to provide space between buildings, because this is on the beach side, there is not a building that is adjacent to it, and the topography and the unique circumstances related to its size and the consideration by the county historically and its topography mean that it is something that should be considered as a part of the variance. The conditions related to the property are peculiar to this property. The pool is permitted as an accessory use. These conditions are not self-imposed, and relief would not cause a detriment to the public or impair the purpose of the ordinance. I would say, as an alternative basis for approval, and I know my time is up, I would ask you to take a look at this information that basically defines setbacks, and it says that you must, the setback really is related to the building line. The building line is the rear edge of any required front yard or setback line for any building or structure measured from the property line, planted or existing, or required right-of-way line, whichever is closer. The county in this case is considering the accreted land right-of-way that has never really been opened as the required right-of-way. Our position is that the required right-of-way is what is required under Section 601 of the ordinance, that says that no building shall be erected unless it has access to a public street. Based upon that analysis, the setback for this pool really goes to that midpoint that the county attorney confirmed would be owned by the townies, because that, in our view, is not required right-of-way.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for both attorneys. You too, Will. In the Department of Natural Resources, it says Exhibit E, and this is the only question I have, and probably somebody from, in number five says, "County shall maintain right to make repairs to the Johnson rock revestments as needed." Is that why the county's holding the right-of-way? I mean, that's?
Mr. Rofalski, there's probably a number of reasons why the county wants to maintain their interest in the right-of-way. You know, the rocks are covered now in the event that, as Mr. Strength demonstrated in his presentation, this area has been subject to a lot of erosion and accretion. So the conditions are changing out there, and y'all can, you know, you go out there on East Beach, you go one day, you go another, two weeks later, the beach out there looks completely different. The county's interest in keeping that right-of-way is, this whole area could erode again, and you could get to a point where it erodes up to where Dixon Drive is. If that's the case, the county wants to have some claim to that area so that the public can use it, whether that be for beach purposes, you know, recreation purposes, something like that, if we do need to do some sort of maintenance in the future, that's one reason. Another reason is, you know, no abandonment has been applied for for this section of street. There's not really a mechanism for the county just to throw up its hands and say, we're going to say that we don't have a right and interest in this right-of-way anymore. And, you know, frankly, too, and I'll get back to this because I wanted to address some of the legal arguments that Mr. Strength made, we have some evidence that there was some erosion there, but we don't know the extent of it. So that's sort of the background for the county. I think it's just a matter of holding on to county, you know, public interests when, you know, we feel like there's a need to. There hasn't been an official abandonment applied for, and, you know, in our mind, we just haven't seen enough evidence to say that our interest in that property ever was completely extinguished.
But if any work were done now, it would have to come from the beach side, because you'd have to tear a dune up to get to the out. So if you had to put rock in, you'd have to come from the beach side, you couldn't come down 11th Street, not from what I saw today.
I can't speak to that.
Yeah, that would be?
There'd be all sorts of DNR permitting issues and things like that.
Exactly.
As well.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment. I don't think I have any problem with the, with your pool and with the cement going out there. I think the other two issues that bother me are the erroneous thing that happened X number of years ago, and the fact that the townies own part of Dixon Lane. I have a problem with that. So, which means I live on Brown Drive, maybe I should own half of Brown Drive and do what I want with it. They would have permission to do what they want with that part of Dixon Lane. They could build a storm on Dixon Lane. What does the county do with it? You can't stop the county from that sort of, to me, if I approve this, it would be with a proviso, that you and the county get together, then is the townies willing to let that go and give it back to the county, or do you have, or are they building something on Dixon Lane?
I would say that the townies are not making any claim in this application to Dixon Lane. I am trying to give you reasons for justification for the 2003 decisions that were made, and there are two principles by which I think you can reasonably interpret them, that are more reasonable than they just made a mistake, because they were clearly deliberate decisions. I do think as a matter of law, if you read the quote from the Bruce case, owners of the properties that are oceanfront property on East Beach own up to one half of Dixon Lane based upon the Bruce case. The issue is that they're still subject to the easement rights of others, and they're still subject to any rights that Glen County may have in the property. It is a technical difference. The point I was trying to make is that in interpreting the setback rules, I believe there's an opening to say that if you have this area, that the setback could be from that other line. The townies in their application with the county for the encroachment agreement make clear that the encroachment agreement with the county allows them to place the pavers for the pool in that area with the county's permission, but if the county asked for it to be removed, that they would remove it.
And the county satisfied with that?
The county?
The county satisfied with that?
Yes, sir.
If I understand this correctly, the applicant walked into this house and said, "I want to buy it," saw the pool, said, "I don't like that pool, and I'm going to build a bigger, better pool," and then said, I got applied for it, and then said, "Oh, I now have to turn it," so that in the past, the water was outside of the line, and now all I want to do is, I want to move it inside the line, I just want to move, I want to have the right to make that change, which is a change for the better. That's, I may have my things wrong, but originally, the water of the pool was outside the line, correct?
Yes, sir.
And now, he's, the applicant wants to make the pool water inside the line.
Yes, sir.
Which is something that I think is nice. My other point or thing that I'm having trouble with is, and I know it doesn't have anything to do with actually what we're doing here, but I don't really care whether or not he put the pavers in and got the county. He could go to the county and say, "I want to put a two-foot by two-foot koi pond right here next to my back door, but in order to do this, I need you to let me put this great big apron in there." So whether or not he got the apron from the county, I'm more concerned about what the ZV322 is, and that's the position of the pool regarding the lot line. I understand what you're saying of all the precedents, but one other comment I'd like to make before I ask for any other questions from the floor is, what I'm kind of concerned about is what you're saying to us is, the county did it and knowingly did it, and therefore we should follow what the county did knowingly in doing it, and you, and by that, I'm going to set, we're going to set a precedent that every other house butts up there can now build a pool within seven inches or seven, whatever it is, of their lot line, and then point to us and say, "Well, you gave it to them." These are the things that concern me, just so you know.
And I would comment that if, you know, I've tried to make two alternate arguments in support of the original decision, but if you take it on the evidence that was in the record at the DNR Shore Protection Committee hearing, showing that the water had eroded to the property line, I would say that that is a significant difference that you will find in any other case on?
Except any other house next door to them or around the corner from them who is in this same beach erosion problem.
The additional difference here is the number of times Glen County had acted to acknowledge or accede to or accept the larger property, the existence of the pool, the townies seeking the building permit and receiving it, making the decision about where to relocate the house, all those are unique factors to this property.
I understand what you're saying as the precedence for where you are and what you think, and the reasons that you think we ought to approve it. think and the reasons that you think we ought to approve it.
So, we don't have any option to stop the townies from putting the koi pond on Dixon Lane?
I think... I think that the, you know, the... I don't want to... I would say that I don't know that that's true. I think these, you know, the Bruce line of cases on what people can do in the East Beach accreted upland area, if you assume, as we are for the purposes of this hearing, that it is county right-of-way. That's why we got the encroachment agreement. And if we assume otherwise, then we are subject to those laws, just like everybody else.
Well, don't misinterpret my koi pond. All I'm really trying to figure out, or all I was trying to do is say that they got the apron. We didn't have anything to do with that, and God bless them. And now, they want to take the pool, which prior to this had gone over the property line, and they want to move a pool within their property line. That's right, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, in order to take this pool that was outside their property line, way outside the setbacks, and move it in, they now need us to say, "Okay, we'll let you move it in even though..." We're going to let you move it 50 feet, or 20 feet, or 5 feet. It doesn't matter. But what you're doing is you're moving the pool so that now the next buyer doesn't have to go through a big harass, because the pool is now within the property line, as long as we grant the variance, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I want to leave you with one, but there was a... Did you put that chart up where they get the easement, where it says something about easement on Dixon Lane? Something along the way said that they had control of the easement.
No, the county does.
Was I wrong or right?
I'm not sure I get it back.
It said that they can control the easement to anyone else. So, if the neighbor wanted to go down that part of Dixon Lane, they could actually control it. Am I wrong?
It's not coming to my mind.
Yeah, I saw. I saw. It was on the top of one of them, but that's my hangup. That's all. I think the townies will give it back to county, but county, who knows about county? Okay, okay. That's my problem with this whole thing, is that easement on Dixon Lane. Quite frankly, I have a problem with it. I have a problem with a few feet there. That doesn't bother me. I do have a problem with the county allowing somebody to take part of Dixon Lane away from the county. And they can stop traffic on it if they wanted to, according to that note that was up there, because they control the easement. They can control the easement on there. That I don't prove, but that's not what you're here for. But when I make my decision, I'll make a note about it.
And I would say also, in the, you know, the townies' respect for the concern for this area and the sensitivity to it is one reason they did not seek an abandonment from Glen County.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we understand, and we have the book if we need it, okay? Is there any questions, public comments, anybody here for or against?
Good morning again. I'm, again, Will Worley, Senior Assistant County Attorney. I want to address some of the points that Mr. Strength made, and hopefully, this will help relieve some of y'all's concerns and maybe some of the questions in your mind specifically about Dixon Drive. I'm not really here to speak on the merits of the variance request itself, except to the extent that those merits depend upon an interpretation of who has what rights in Dixon Drive. Just to start off, the county's position is that it has a public right-of-way easement over Dixon Drive. That easement has never been extinguished, and that therefore, to your concern, sir, that if someone wants to do something in that right-of-way, they're going to have to get some sort of permission from the county before they can do that. So, our position is that, you know, in the instance of a koi pond, or a shed, or something like that, that can't happen without, you know, in this instance, the townies coming to the county and saying, "This is what we want to do. Do you allow us to do this or not?" The argument that the letter from John Peterson and York Phillips in 2003 about the original pool, that that is the deliberate decision on the county to take a position on Dixon Drive, I think is erroneous. One of the things you'll notice, the people that weren't copying on that letter were the county attorney, county administrator, or any board commissioners members. Those are the folks that set the policy for the county and make those kinds of decisions, specifically in this instance, which is a very technical legal decision. You know, whatever reasons they had for writing that letter at the time, it's hard for us to tell right now. I would point out that the slide that Mr. Strength showed, that showed the plan that was submitted back in that time, while it did show Dixon Drive, it also seemed to depict Dixon Drive stopping at the property line of the Carters. That's probably the erroneous information we're talking about here, that the county says is at the heart of that original decision. You know, perhaps staff got that, didn't question it, and took it at face value and said, "Oh, Dixon Drive ends there. We don't have a problem. It meets all the other requirements of our ordinances. Here's your letter." The thing about it is, we're all speculating about that. We don't know why that letter was written, what information, what consideration went into it. But I will submit to you that a staffer, and specifically in the case of York Phillips, who wasn't even the department head, can't stand as a proposition for the entire county. As far as the Bruce case that's been mentioned, I think Mr. Strength gave you an accurate depiction of what that case said. However, specifically in relation to the arguments about Dixon Drive, the court said this, and I'm going to quote directly from the case here, and this is Supreme Court case 1978, about the argument that Dixon Drive had eroded so much that everyone's interest in it had been extinguished. And the court said, "Some respondents offered evidence to show that all easements to the land had been lost by evulsion. The examiner did not agree that the evidence offered was sufficient to show the land area had been lost, and respondents accepted to this finding." And I think this is the crux of what the court said here. "This issue of fact must also be tried by a jury." They go on to talk about it a little bit more, and then they end that paragraph by saying, "The facts as respects each lot could vary with resulting different jury verdicts." The court very clearly said, "We're not taking a position on whose interests in Dixon Drive have been extinguished or are still there." You're going to have to go to court. You're going to have to have a... You're going to present evidence to a jury, and that jury's going to have to decide on a case-by-case basis whether those interests were lost or not. That's not happened for this piece of property. And that's part of the county's position, that we still claim a right-of-way easement over Dixon Drive, because that question has just simply not been answered. Until it's been answered, our position is, you know, we still have that easement over Dixon Drive.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The attorney for the applicant is the one that... With Dixon Drive and all that kind of stuff, and easements and everything else. If the applicant had come in and just shown us the property line and said, "I want to build a pool. I just want to build a pool within the property line, and I'm just asking that I get short shift," we wouldn't be talking about Dixon Drive. We'd be saying, "Okay, or not okay." Am I correct? I'm confused that Dixon Drive has anything to do with whether or not we grant a variance for an individual to take a pool that used to be outside of his property line and wants to bring it inside of his property line. And other than that, I think that, in my opinion, I think that's the only question we're here to talk about. If there's any other arguments about rights of way or anything else, that should be, in my opinion, should be taken up with the county commission or in court. But I thought I was just here to decide whether or not to give this guy a variance so he could build a pool. And we've done this kind of variance stuff for pools, even in somebody's front yard. So, I don't want to cut you short, but all I see is this picture of his property line, and an old pool and a new pool. And a new pool is now within the property line. He's not asking to put it where the eastern part of the pool was equal to the eastern part of the old pool. He just wants to put the pool on his property, and he wants us to say, "Okay, or not okay," for the setback encroachment. Am I wrong?
I would agree with that assessment, that the issue before you is whether to grant a variance to the side yard setback in this instance. I will say this. I don't begrudge Mr. Strength making any and all arguments that are available to him on behalf of his client. And, you know, I understand where he's going with his argument, that really what he's trying to say is, you shouldn't be treating what we're treating as a property line, perhaps shouldn't be treated as a property line, which does go to the question of whether he needs a variance in the first place or not. However, it's our position that that is the property line because of the existence of the right-of-way of Dixon Drive. And therefore, the issue before you is, do you grant them a side yard variance from the boundary of Dixon Drive? And I'll speak directly to that, and this will be probably one of the last things I say. Regardless of that argument, as to whether they are owned to the center line or not, the definition of building line that Mr. Joey, that Joey shared with you earlier, not only says that the setback line is measured from a property line or required right-of-way line, but it says is measured from the property line, platted, existing, or required right-of-way line. The county's position is, there's a platted, existing right-of-way line out there, and that's where the setback is measured from. And I also don't think it's quite correct to say that the only reason for the building line with setbacks is to separate buildings. It's also to control site coverage. So, having said that, I hope I've kind of made the county's position clear as far as the Dixon Drive rights, and cleared things up for y'all. But I agree that your question here is, should they be given a variance for the side yard setback?
And if we grant the variance, our decision will have no impact on whether or not they own half a Dixon Drive, or all a Dixon Drive, or anything. It doesn't set any precedent that the applicant's attorney can now go and say, 20 years from now, "We want to build a castle on this other, on Dixon Drive," and that the...
Right. And I don't think that's their intention, but you're right. I mean, the county would be here again to say, "Our interest in Dixon Drive still exists. We have a role to play in this. We have some control over what happens there."
Well, and if the applicant wanted to do any kind of building outside of this property line, he's still got to get a building permit, right?
Correct.
So, no matter what we do, we're just here to decide whether or not this applicant can get a pool within his property line.
Right. I think if your concern is that by granting this, you're granting permission to do other things...
Not at all. Not at all. That's why I'm trying to just define it. If the applicant walked in, we got the picture of the property line, the old pool, the new pool, we'd all be sitting here saying, "Okay, fine." The only issue that I can see, and we're... Each of us are going to have to think about, is somebody's going to come along and say, "I want to build a pool, and I want to have a seven-inch, and you gave it away to the applicant on ZV 322." But then, my argument would be, we go on these by case by case, and we can look at property lines. We can look at all sorts of things. So, the next applicant that comes in and says, "Well, you did it for that applicant. You got to do it for us." We've been through that a couple times, and I think it's a specious argument, because we don't do that. If they want to set a precedent, they got to go to the county commission. I'm going to get off my soapbox. Thank you.
I got a question for you. I walked the... Walked to the beach, and when I parked my truck there to go on your property, I walked down the line, walked where it says "public." The guy on the right side says, "No parking." I don't know how far out you come. How much room is it for somebody to walk to the beach from between your two houses? Anybody got any idea? Not your name to the issue. I was just curious. Anybody got any idea?
Okay.
I don't know.
I was walking to the beach. It was just so narrow, and the guy on the right said, "No parking." I don't know.
Well, if I can, we're not here to determine whether it's 32 inches, or 36 inches, or 48 inches. I understand, but we've been here an hour and 15 minutes trying to figure out what we're supposed to do, and I think that all we're supposed to do in this case is decide whether or not he can build his pool and get his variance. And since you say that whatever we do here has got nothing to do with other property lines, or Dixon Drive, or whatever, all we're doing is what we're supposed to do, and nothing that we say or do is going to have any kind of legal precedent about anything going on later on, correct? Okay. I'd like to call for a motion, either...
I will make that. I will call... I will move to approve the variance application, ZV 3222, requesting a variance from Section 701.5 of the Glen County Children's Ordinance to permit encroaching into the required side yard setbacks.
I second. Thank you. I have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. You have your variance unanimous.
Thank you very much.